Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to the November, December 5th City Council meeting.
December 19.
December 19.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, I'll come back next week.
Welcome to the December 19th City Council meeting. Time warp. And let it be known that all the City Council members are present and City officials, and we will stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, as we once again enter the blessed Advent season during which we celebrate the birth of our only Son, we again come before you to invite those blessings on these meetings in which we, as mere men and women, attempt to form our laws and govern ourselves. We hope and pray that all things we do are worthy in your sight and ask that you may help us be so. And let us at this time not forget, remember, those who are less fortunate than ourselves. Amen.
Amen.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Merry Christmas.
There he is.
Look at this fine group up here. What do you think? Should I take care of them? Well, I'll tell you what, Santa Claus is gonna come up here. Oh my golly, we've got tea and coffee here now. What a pleasant surprise.
Thank you, Santa.
I want to be on your nice list.
Well, I'll tell you what we're gonna do now. Or this, there, I guess I should say. Oh, I know, you don't eat candy.
No.
You don't eat candy, but you may have to find somebody while you're bicycling.
Thank you, Santa.
Merry Christmas. Thank you, Santa. Thank you.
And we can't forget you over here, most important. Is there any chance of me making a proclamation, Ms. Mayor?
What do you think, Council members?
Think that's okay?
I think we need a previous.
Okay, Santa, we all agree. Let's go for it.
All right, well, you know, I'm looking in Punta Gorda, and I know that there are a few people who are on my nice list.
I know. We had one of the young ladies, remember, that did the right thing?
Yes.
Who said that she was bad?
Yes.
And then she says, but now she's good.
But you know what Santa's gonna do?
What?
Because the power invested in me, by me, and Saint Nicholas.
Hey, you have every right to, Santa.
That's exactly right. I am going to say and put every single person in the city of Punta Gorda and Charlotte County on my nice list for the rest of the year.
You, I made it.
I was worried about you.
Do you all promise to stay on my nice list?
Oh, of course.
Oh.
Santa makes the kids do it. Yeah, Santa makes the kids do it. You guys are all on my nice list. And by the way, I may have my Santa hat on, but while I'm not doing Santa Claus some nights, I'm out in the middle of the night with a guy by the name of Bill Gunther over there, taking care and making sure nefarious activities amongst the Punta Gorda canals aren't kept at a minimum.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. You take your.
Everybody, I want to wish you all a super, super Merry Christmas, a happy holiday, and remember this, we are so fortunate because I live in that cold North Pole and you guys live in the greatest place in the world.
All right. It's a way to get us going, on December the 19th. All right, our first item of the agenda is a proclamation for the PGI Neighborhood Marine Watch Day, and Councilmember Gary Wine is going to present that.
It's my honor, but I think Santa just did it.
Well.
Okay, before I actually give the official proclamation, I want to also give some additional recognition to the Marine Watch members who volunteered as safety boat captains for this year's Freedom Swim. Just an item of note, they pulled nine swimmers out that couldn't complete it. It wasn't one of me, because I can't swim. And so if they're here, I'd like to ask them to stand up to give some special recognition, but I want to give a special thanks to Captain John Getner, Getger?
Genninger.
Genninger. Captain Gary Burgess, Captain Gary Skillhorn, Captain Mike Doherty, Captain Randy Fleming, Captain Chuck Mattos, and Captain Ron Davis. Thank you guys very much for keeping us safe. And it's my honor to give the official proclamation, because this is a group that's especially close to my heart. They do more than just what they say they do and are also very much involved in our community. So it's with great honor, I will present this to Bill here shortly. Okay, proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas the Punta Gorda Isles Neighborhood Marine Watch was formed in May of 2009 under the guidance of Bill Gunther with a mission to provide watch and report surveillance for all Punta Gorda Isles homes and property owners. And whereas the PGI Neighborhood Marine Watch, the only nighttime all-volunteer-on-the-water patrol effort in the Punta Gorda Isles Canal System, had its first surveillance patrol on June 10th, 2009, and continues to this day, reporting all observed illegal marine crime activity, boating offenses, and wildlife violations to the Punta Gorda Police Department, Charlotte County Sheriff's Office, and the Florida Wildlife Commission. And whereas Marine Watch members, known as dock watchers, stand watch from their docks in the surrounding canals, thus providing homeowners an increased sense of security. And whereas, on average, volunteer Marine Watch members annually contribute 816 on-the-water man-hours, and whereas Marine Watch members has now reached 60 members with 36 members scheduled to perform approximately 68 hours of on-the-water and land patrols each month. And whereas the PGI Neighborhood Marine Watch on-the-water night patrols have become an asset to local law enforcement agencies in their enforcement of illegal activity in the 50-plus miles of canals in the waterfront community of Punta Gorda Isles. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim Wednesday, December 19th, 2018, as PGI Neighborhood Marine Watch Day, and recognizes the outstanding efforts of this group in increasing the safety and security of the Punta Gorda Isles Canal System. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this 19th day of December, 2018, signed Mayor Prafki, Mayor, and Karen Smith, City Clerk, and accepting will be Bill.
That's a lot of whereas. Thank you so much. Can I say a few words?
Would you go to the microphone so?
Hey, Bill?
Bill?
Why don't you use the microphone so we can all hear you?
Thank you, and for the members that showed up, thank you very much. For those that didn't, we'll hear from me. I'm accepting this proclamation, which is the third one we've received over nine years, and we're very proud of that. To me, it's a recognition of success in a program that was, we had no idea what was gonna happen with it. So to the 80 members on their behalf who have passed through the program, and the 65 members who are currently among the, well, the club they belong to is the Florida, what is it when you can't sleep?
Insomnia.
They're up in the night anyhow, so I just thought I'd put them to work. Anyhow, this is their recognition. I'll see that they all get this, and they can hang it in their house or whatever they want to do. A group of this nature is evidence of an article I read in the paper this morning by our mayor. It is a community engagement at the heart of this community. We had one mission when we organized. It was to be a deterrent. It is all we could be. We are volunteers. You don't feel good, you don't go on patrol. Your wife don't feel good, you don't go on patrol. Your dog is sick, you don't go on patrol. But there's somebody out there every night, somewhere. And I think that's what we've established with the one group of individuals, which would be our commercial fishermen who like to come in during the mullet runs. They're not allowed to use nets in there, as everybody knows. I can't use a net, you can't use a net, and neither can they. And I think we've reached a point where they understand that if they see us, the call has been made, and they no longer want to risk their commercial license, they no longer want to risk their boats, their equipment. So it's been a good nine years, and we hope to keep going. Thank you very much. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we'll get on with it. The next item on the agenda is the introduction of board or committee member nominees. So if there's anyone that would like to introduce themselves to the, who's nominated for a board or committee member? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move to the next agenda item, which is a public hearing.
Yes, and this is a quasi-judicial public hearing, V-04-18. So if anyone is going to be providing any evidence or testimony during this hearing, please rise to be sworn by the City Clerk at this time.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. When you're ready to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, and indicate that you've been sworn.
This is a request by Audrey Nikitin, property owner for a variance to the Land Development Regulations pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 16.10 and Section 17.6, Punta Gorda Code, to allow a new single-family residence to be constructed in a general, single-family zoning district on a non-conforming lot of record containing 9,042 square feet instead of 9,600 square feet, as required by Chapter 26, Section 3.4G1, Punta Gorda Code, and to allow construction of a new swimming pool, deck, and screen enclosure with 15-foot rear yard setbacks at the closest points instead of 20 feet, as required per Chapter 26, Section 3.13D, Punta Gorda Code.
Good morning, Lisa Hanen, zoning official, and I have been sworn. This was continued from the November 21st City Council meeting. Council did approve the continuance for this. This was heard by Board of Zoning Appeals yesterday, December 18th, where the motion to approve the request failed by a vote of five to two. I'd like to enter my staff report into the record in its entirety by reference. Staff is recommending approval of the request based on the conditions of the lot being smaller than what is a buildable, or smaller than what is the required lot size of 9,600 square feet. Per Chapter 26, Section 17.6, parent B, when the use proposed for a non-conforming lot of record is one that is conforming in all respects, but the applicable setback requirements cannot reasonably be complied with, the Board of Zoning Appeals may allow deviations from the applicable setback requirements based upon conditions found in Article 16.10. Based upon that, with the lot size being smaller and narrower on the length on the side, it is only 103 feet in length versus what most of them are 120 feet deep. So staff is recommending approval of this request. Here with any questions.
Lisa, from an ADA perspective, is there any requirement to have a certain amount of area on the backside of the pool, on the water side, closest to the water?
I can't, I don't know. I can't answer that question. I'll defer to our city attorney.
What, did you say from an ADA requirement?
Yes. So, okay. I have a friend that is an engineer who took a look at this site plan, and it was the opinion of this professional engineer who was an engineer.
If I, let me stop you right there.
Okay.
As a quasi-judicial public hearing, the only evidence and testimony you can base your decision on is that which comes forward, sworn testimony at the public hearing.
I guess the only question I would have then is, would it be possible to amend this site plan so that you could at least get 17 or 18 feet in from the seawall?
Without being an engineer, Vice Mayor, I can't answer that question. I'm not an engineer. I wouldn't know how the structure could work. I know there is a certain distance from the house to the pool that has to be maintained, but that would be more of a building department question. I can't answer that.
Okay. Do you know what that distance, could the building department provide what that distance is?
I believe it's five feet, and it seems that five feet is shown on the site plan.
I'd just like to ask, do we have any input from the neighbors of this?
We have not received any comment from the neighbors.
Okay, but they have been informed, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So they had the opportunity to respond if they chose to be negative to this particular project?
That is correct. The property was posted properly for legal notice.
Okay. I might just point out for point of reference, under other special conditions, for Emerald Point, we made exceptions for their, in their case, a continuing coating between the distance between the pool and the, or in their case, the linnies and the seawall. So I'm not sure that unless there's a structural issue that would jeopardize the seawall itself, I don't see a particular problem with this.
Let me point out, you know, under variances, precedent is not a relevant consideration because each project, each variance stands on its own merit.
I absolutely understand that. I'm just giving my opinion based on, not a precedent, but just a previous application that.
Thank you.
Okay, but thank you.
Has anyone looked at what a lap pool really needs to be? This is 12 feet wide. That seems like a fairly wide pool to begin with. My pool's not even 12 feet wide, and I don't have a lap pool. So it seems like the design is, may not be actually trying to help us meet our code. So I wondered if anyone?
Staff wouldn't look at the size of a lap pool. It would be up to the applicant to make the argument that this is the type of pool that they need versus a narrower or shorter lap pool.
Okay.
Can I address that?
Though, when the public hearing gets open, they'll.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I don't know.
It's okay.
Okay. Did the, well, I guess I'll have to ask the applicant a different question, so when we have the public hearing. Any more questions for Lisa?
Lisa, did I hear you say that the Board of Zoning Appeals didn't approve this?
That's correct. The vote to approve was, I mean, they did a vote to approve, and it was a five to four no, or five to two no. Five to two no. They did a motion to approve.
Okay.
And it was, it was not approved by a motion of five to two.
Are we allowed to see why?
Well, that's what I was gonna ask.
Well, that was yesterday, so we don't have the actual minutes.
Oh.
But there were several comments by the board thinking that it could be redesigned to meet the setbacks, and then they questioned some of the documentation that was submitted with the application.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Lisa before we have the public hearing? This is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing, and.
You hear first from the applicant.
First, yeah, well, first hear from the applicants. Thank you.
The reason why the pool has been designed this way.
State your name for the record and whether you've been sworn.
Oh, I'm sorry. Deepwater, and I have been sworn.
And what is your relation to the applicant?
I'm their friend. I'm their voice.
Thank you.
The reason why they've asked for the width of the pool is because Andre has to swim, he's had some injury, and he has to swim with a mono fin due to his legs. And the mono fin is two feet, and he's a big man, and he must swim in stillness. He has to alter his consciousness so he can reset his brain. He has had a head injury. And with a narrow pool, he will not have enough space to turn around and swim back, and that's why they have asked for the added width.
You have 20 minutes to prepare your presentation.
Okay. And also, he has said that it's not possible to put a pool of any width in that, that space. Without five feet variance.
Are we, can we ask questions?
Yes.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. One of the things you submitted were letters from doctors in Russia. Has there been any medical opinions and consultation here in the United States so that you can provide letters? Because that was some time ago, and our bodies change, things change, that would support this documentation?
Have you seen an American doctor? He has not seen an American doctor. He goes back to Russia every six months.
Council members, do you have questions?
Well, I guess I have a question. I mean, I still think that judging from the way the site plan is laid out, as Nancy has said, my pool is not that wide, and I don't, I still don't understand why this could not be amended so that we could at least get a couple more feet in from the seawall. We have found since all the hurricane damage, we have some houses that were built a lot closer to the seawall than they should have been originally, and we have issues with seawalls, and we have issues with pool decks that were getting cracked when the seawalls caved in, and I'm very concerned. And this, as I understand it, this is an original seawall on this property?
From what I understand, from canal maintenance, it is an original seawall, has not been replaced. However, I was given an email that it is in very good condition.
But how old is the seawall?
I, they didn't give me an age. If it's original, it depends on when the, when that area was developed.
I can, I can tell you from a personal perspective, when my seawall was redone a few years ago, and they had to take away half of my backyard, I was very concerned that we were gonna, we were gonna lose some stuff in my backyard. And so this concerns me, anytime we have a variance that encroaches on that 20-foot setback. I would, I would really like to see the site plan modified personally.
Jaha?
I mean, I think this is for his quality of life, and I mean, I'm more concerned about him being able to have what he needs to be able to recover medically. I think that's most important. I mean, if they wish to take that risk of losing a few feet, I think that he has a right to do that. I think that his quality of life is much more important.
I'm not disputing the health situation. I just think that the site plan could be modified.
I'm saying because the pool being smaller means he can't get the care he needs, and that's why I'm saying modifying it is really not in our purview, I think, in that regard.
Ma'am? Sure. Originally, when we did this, the builder has requested every inch of possible space, and he has drawn this. And he is, I mean, they are willing, as long as they can get what they need in less distance from the seawall. However, if he's not able to do that, Andre or Mr. Nikitin is most willing to reinforce the seawall as the seawall restoration people suggest.
I wouldn't see that as a viable option, because I think it would require a great deal of engineering to determine what would be necessary on this particular property. What is the proposed width of the seawall right now? I'm trying to figure that out from the site plan. The swimming pool? The pool itself?
19 feet.
12 feet wide.
Yeah, the 19 feet includes the deck, is that right?
Yes. The 19 feet.
So it's 12 feet.
12 feet is the pool.
12 feet is the actual pool.
All right, so the real question that's before the City Council at the moment, one of the criteria for a variance is that the variance request is the minimum necessary to allow for reasonable use of the property. And so the operative question, even taken into consideration the desire for the pool as it may be beneficial to the applicant's health, is whether 12 feet is the minimum variance necessary to allow for that. And, you know, you can request further testimony if you need to from the applicant. You can use your own common knowledge as to whether or not 12 feet is the minimum necessary. But that's, I think, what we should be focusing on at the moment.
I guess I also focus on the fact that the applicant has had this condition and purchased this property to try to accommodate this.
Yes, that is another relevant consideration for the variance purposes.
But they purchased the property, there is no home built on it at this point in time, and so it would seem that, you know, one would need to investigate whether what you were looking for is possible to build on something before you go through with that. So I think that, you know, I feel like it's like purchasing it and then coming to us and saying, it didn't fit, but I want to make it fit. So it would seem that while I understand the applicant, it seems like doesn't want to have to turn around differently, I think that, you know, turning around and swinging in a different direction, you know, I have difficulty looking at this and saying, help us meet partway. Because I feel like our code is the code for a reason, and for us to give a variance beyond the code, we'd really need to see there was an effort to at least try to accommodate and meet the code. That would be, so, Debbie?
I'm really, I'm really uncomfortable overturning the zoning board without knowing.
Should we be closing the public hearing before we continue on, or we can?
Well, yeah, I mean, if you're, if there's no further, I mean, questions of the applicant or any further.
Are there other more questions of the applicant?
Or any further discussion from the applicant? Do you have anything, anything further to add?
He wants to say something.
Then you have to, please state your name for the record.
My name is Andre Nikitin.
Thank you.
And have you been sworn, sir?
Have you been sworn? Yes.
Yes. I just want to tell you about what is necessary for this kind of swimming pool to me. And sorry for my poor English. It's very difficult to explain in my language, in Russian language, but I try to explain in English. The problem is, I was, have been, big damage when it was accident 10 years ago, and I broke very many bones, and the hand and leg, and very hard to hack. And I stay in hospital more than one half, a half a year, more than six months, and I stay alive. And, but I have a big problem with, the main problem is the brain, mind. In this case, I make many medicines to try, because it's a very hard pain in the head, and I lose coordination and shaking, something like that. And very many pills or medicine and something else we try, but it's without, without any result. And just only in several years, I, when I feel a little bit better, my doctor, very nice, from Russia, doctor of course, he claimed me, you must move. Every, every day, you must. Every day, you must move by walking, swimming, ride bicycle, or something like that because you have a very many damage. In this case, you must moving. And the pills, it's not, it's good, but it's not help to your pain from the head. But I have a problem with the leg because I three times broke on right leg. And right leg is a little bit shorter than left. In this case, some problem with this leg because of the pain in the leg too. Maybe it's phantom pain in my brain, but it doesn't matter. I don't can walking a long time, don't can riding bicycle a long time, can't swim a long time with this leg. In this case, the therapy they suggest me to swimming. But when I swimming, I must to moving both of legs. And the one legs, it's tired very quickly and pain. In this case, my big friend in Russia to recommend me to not to use Monofin. My wife has show this special Monofin because when I put Monofin on this legs, when I moving legs, left leg to help to right leg. In this case, I moving in the swimming pool with, it's not swimming pool for me. It's moving, it's special moving because when I moving, I make a push with this Monofin. And moving maybe 80, 60 feet long without any moving. And to, the main idea to move in a state of alternate consciousness, sorry for my bad English.
Alter consciousness.
To change, to reset my brain because it's like sleeping. Because when I sleeping at home, it's pain and headache and something like that, and nightmares. And I cannot sleeping because the body is weight, and the body is not good condition. And when I moving in the water, I have the body, I like in the space. And it's helped me to sleep when I moving. Maybe it's several seconds, but it's enough to reset. And the pain is come out step by step. In this case, the doctor recommend me, strongly recommend me to do it maybe several times in a day, not long time, short time, maybe 15, 20 minutes. And it's very good for to my health. In this case, I try to find place in the world to, when I can living. And I find this very nice place. It's I fall in love with this place, Pontagordo Isles. I very love this place. And I long time to find the place to possible to put the swimming pool there. The swimming pool must be 75 feet long because I can pushing four times, exactly four times. Because one time, two, three, four, another side. And I turn U-turn, turn over with this, and the same to another. And several times to moving like that. It is only one way to help me with my problems with the brain. And I very, I am very hope you can help me with it. And if you help me, I think, I think it will be very nice. You can say you make happy to me and my wife today.
Is there any other testimony that you have for us?
Sorry?
Let me, a couple of questions. Sir, how tall are you?
How I am tall?
Yeah.
Six and a half. Tall with Monofin, it's maybe nine.
Yeah, wait.
In this case?
You're six foot, six inches?
Six and a half.
Six and a half?
Yes, six, six.
Yeah. And again, and what is the width and length of the fin?
It's two and a half.
Wide.
Wide. And not long because I'm with this inches, it's nine approximately. And I need approximately one feet for the other side. It's not less than 11 wide. But for better, better 12, if it's possible, of course. If you can permit, if I can, oh, how to say it? Permit me? It will be 12 wide, it will be very nice. In this case, it doesn't matter what wide to put on this plan because the lot is not rectangle, it's like that. Because if not possible to move it on the five feet, it doesn't matter what wide.
It's a cul-de-sac lot, and there are many of those in Pontagordo Isles and Burnstone Isles. I live on one.
I do too.
And so, it's, they're non-standard as far as we might say. But there are many of them, and we have to deal with the size.
Couple more questions, sir.
Sure, go ahead.
How deep is the proposed pool?
It doesn't matter how deep, maybe.
No, it matters, there's a reason for my question. How deep is the pool that you're wanting?
Maybe five feet, maybe, maybe four and a half feet.
And what's the minimum depth that you would need to do the exercise that you are looking for?
Minimum, minimum four maybe. Because I not swimming only under the water, I swimming up the water, I swimming down under the water without breathing, so moving the water because I not hear, no voices. It's better to concentrate my mind. And one more, I forgot. I'm not very rich man. I'm not too much rich. In this case, of course, they suggest me to buy two lands together and my the swimming pool, but I haven't enough money to buy two.
Two what?
Two lots.
Lots, oh, okay.
This is a problem. In this case, I find the special place, it's possible to put this swimming pool. To me, it doesn't matter what kind of house on this lot, just only swimming pool is mine.
Have you, I'm sorry, there's a reason why I'm asking these questions.
You're fine, you're fine.
Have you investigated what they call swim spas?
Yes, this on the future, this. No?
A swim spa is, it's not a built-in device. It's a device that we could sit on a deck with jets that simulate the motion, but you actually swim stationary.
I understand, yes.
It's a therapeutic.
It's very nice idea, it's very good idea for another reason, when you want to swimming. But I not swimming, every jets, every waves, it's not possible because.
As I recall from the previous testimony, he needed stillness, is that correct?
That was not brought up in the previous testimony.
But you had mentioned that, that he needed stillness for this exercise.
Stillness.
And so, that technology probably wouldn't be applicable in this case.
More questions?
I've heard enough.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Let me, go ahead.
You have other questions before we close the public hearing?
I would feel more comfortable if we did have a local doctor review the medical conditions just for, because there is a language translation issue here. And it would be, from my perspective, beneficial if we had a, an American doctor oversee, perhaps a Russian doctor that has come to the United States and, you know, understands, the translate for us, just to verify the issues. I'm very empathetic to what you're asking for. But the doctors that you're referring to can be anywhere from 4,500 to 12,000 miles away, depending whether you're in the Euro district, or the eastern, or whatever. I'm just saying. And it would be, to me, beneficial if you had presented to us information where it had been translated to us through a doctor that speaks our language also. I understand that, I'm just saying, I'm empathetic to that, but I'd be more comfortable with that.
I think that's not impossible if that would be something that you would want to consider.
I have a suggestion. There is, under the American Disabilities Act and the Florida Fair Housing Act, there is a requirement for local governments to consider granting a reasonable accommodation with, for persons with disabilities, to modify the requirements of our codes in order to give the opportunity for a person with disabilities to be able to utilize their property in the same fashion as persons without disabilities in the area. Now, in order to qualify for that, there's certain buzzwords that physician, medical providers are required to include in their report to satisfy the requirements of the statute itself as it provides the definition for a disabled person. And also, what the minimum requirements would be in order to afford the opportunity for a person with a disability to enjoy the pool. My concern is that we don't have the buzzwords here. And in fact, we have more medical information before us than is what would be required under the ADA. The ADA doesn't give us the opportunity, and nor should it, to actually inquire into the specifics of the medical or mental issues. But a physician that's knowledgeable about the requirements of the ADA or with some simple research can provide us with the appropriate documentation. And the other, and I would call this a therapy pool, and to that extent, if the depth of the pool can be no more than four feet versus what might be a standard pool in the area, and I don't know what that might be, that would allow the city council to definitely consider this to be a therapy pool as opposed to a recreational swimming pool. And the upside of that is that the respondent has an opportunity to take advantage of the therapy afforded by the pool. The downside for the respondent is that when they go to sell the property, the property with a therapy pool versus a standard-sized swimming pool may make the property less marketable. So, that's the downside of putting in a therapy pool, but it's the upside for the respondent. So, if the respondent would wish to, I mean, the applicant would wish to continue this public hearing, give themselves the opportunity to obtain the appropriate letter from a medical provider with the limitation as opposed to the minimum requirements of the pool size, therapy pool size that's required, that would give the city council more opportunity to fit this request into the criteria that's presently before you.
One thing, with the therapy pool aspect, still due to his height, those limitations still may put him in a limitation. If he says he needs four and a half to five feet, even that would be in the, that would still, it would make the pool not as usable as it should be for his therapy.
Well, he said he can do, swim in a pool that was four feet.
No, he said four and a half to five.
I think that's what he was saying, the pool as presently proposed is four and a half. He said that he could, he would need four feet for his purposes.
Because, I only ask one thing, because, see, with staff reviewing this, one thing, when one buys a lot, they don't do a site plan in the beginning. And we can't act as if that's a reasonable assumption. People buy lots, and then they build houses afterwards. People don't necessarily say, "The limitation." No, generally, people don't know that, you're not going to make an assumption that your lot is non-conforming lot. That's not, a home buyer generally is not going to say, "Hmm, we buy this lot, I assume the city," it's a lot which the city doesn't view as conforming. That's not a reasonable assumption for someone, that when they buy a house, they're going to assume that the lot is a lot you can use to do something normally. That when one buys a house, they're going to say, "Hmm, let me make the assumption this is a non-conforming lot, and then go through much steps before I buy it." That's not a normal thing that home buyers do. What I'm saying is, this is not harming anyone. If staff is fine with it, and it fits in parameters that are comfortable with them, and then he's able to meet his health conditions, I really don't see what the big issue is. I don't.
Nancy?
If I might, with all due respect, and this situation arose before you were a member of the city council, and it's one that I use in my lectures to realtors about the importance of doing due diligence on behalf of their buyers. The setback for swimming pools in our code hasn't always been there. It's of relatively recent vintage. And so, if you take, if you see an aerial of a canal, and like I said, I use this as part of my presentation, you can see a lot of swimming pools that were built before our codes went into effect that are much closer today than the required setback. And what happens is, because we've had people that have bought property and reliance upon their representative out on the property, when the question is asked, "Can I have a swimming pool?" And they look up and down the canal, and they see that there are swimming pools that are there, not taking into consideration that there's a setback requirement, and they say, "Sure." And so, they close on the property, they build their house, and they come in for their swimming pool. And we have to tell them, "Oh, no, you can't have a swimming pool because it won't meet the setback." And they will say, "Yeah, but I bought the property in reliance upon what my realtor told me." And we have to unfortunately tell them that that's not the basis for a variance. A variance requires unique circumstances that are not of the property, the buyer's own making. And included in that is the responsibility of the property owner to determine what codes do apply to that property and determine whether the property is suitable for their purposes. You may be able to, and you should, in the general, in my legal opinion, in the normal course of events, hold an applicant like this gentleman to that same standard. Just because they bought it without considering what the setbacks were, weren't sufficient. But in this particular case, assuming that there is a medical provider that would determine that he qualifies under the American Disabilities Act, that gives us the tools that we might need to be able to modify the codes for this particular case and not open Pandora's box to everybody saying, "Well, my doctor says that I need it for health reasons," which we hear all the time, and that's not sufficient.
Can I address that? We did speak to three different pool companies, and they all said the pool would fit.
Well, then that's unfortunate.
But we've also had, in other situations here, where contractors have gone on ahead and done work for people without even coming to get permits first, and then we find out later that the work that was done was non-conforming. So, it's, that happens all the time.
And so, I'll give this public service announcement. Anybody that's wishing to purchase property, that wants to make sure that it complies with the codes and it's suitable for their purposes, even though it's not required in Florida, unlike other states, to have an attorney to review the contract, review the property, if you don't want to be stuck with a property that's not suitable for your purposes, you need to consult with an attorney. Because even a closing agent, which is very common these days at a title company, they're not allowed to give legal advice. And so, they don't look into the things that might be helpful. And it's unfortunate that people think that they can rely upon the pool contractor, but the pool contractor is trying to sell a pool. And they may not be able to give the legal advice either as to whether or not. So, I'm trying to be helpful in this situation, and would suggest the city council consider that.
Debbie, something she'd like to say?
I would like to address the fact that it's not hurting anybody for him to do this. If you live next door and his seawall goes because something has, you know, become unstable, it does hurt because we all have to pay for that. So, I think that we have to take into consideration why we have the setbacks. The reason, I mean, there must have been a really good reason, or they wouldn't have codified it. And I just, I think we have to be very careful when we overrule.
And I think that the setbacks in this particular case, and we've got a six-foot setback that is more intended to protect the seawall and to provide maintenance for the seawall. The 20-foot rear yard or waterfront yard setback, I think, is primarily for visual on waterfront. So, you know, and that's why I'm not so concerned about the suggestion that they would pay extra money for reinforcing the seawall or whatever. It is potentially detrimental to a neighbor if you're going to, you know, put a structure in what was intended. in what was intended to be an opportunity for viewing across the water property.
Gary?
I think the the questions at hand for this particular property, this particular situation is, what I refer to as translation and as our esteemed honorable David Levine has pointed out, could comply with, could be dealt with under ADA review with appropriate. And I think that was one point I was making. We do not have neighbors that are complaining. And if we, and I have to have a strong inclination that this does not affect the integrity of the seawall because of a fifteen foot setback, because we have a lot of properties with a lot less than that and where the seawalls have done well. If there's a reasonable expectation that there's no detriment to the seawall on this application, I think that if we could continue this public hearing and get an ADA, or get a local physician's opinion relative to the ADA criteria, that we should be empathetic to this particular couple and move forward at that time. I think we just got, what we've got is we've got a couple of questions. I understand from our discussion why the the building zone people would vote to not approve it because I see some questions. I see them as questions that can be probably relatively quickly ascertained with with the idea of a therapy pool instead of a swimming pool with the appropriate setbacks. Again, as long as the neighborhood, the neighbors aren't doing it, then that would be something that I think that we would be able to go forward, I would be able to go forward.
I guess there are a couple of questions. One is, have the neighbors even been asked?
Yes, they have been.
They've been notified.
They've been notified, okay.
That's part of the legal requirements.
Is the applicant willing to obtain some type of a documentation?
She said yes.
For a need for a therapy pool?
We can, we can attempt to find a Russian doctor.
We would like an American.
No, no, we need an American doctor.
An American doctor who speaks Russian and can look at and understand the medical report.
Let me help out. You know, we have in in our, in our packet, a translation from the Russian physician. I I don't know that you really need to have an American doctor that speaks Russian. I think what you need to do is have an American doctor, if necessary, to review the report from the Russian doctor. Be familiar with the requirements of the ADA and then give us a a short letter without providing any detail necessarily with respect to his condition and just indicate to us in the right way that a a reasonable accommodation is requested in this case.
And reasonable, I would expect, would be, what is the minimum, minimum requirement for a therapy pool?
And that's, and that's.
That may not come from a doctor, but it may come from another professional. Because twelve feet seems to to me to be beyond reasonable. It doesn't seem to be, it seems to be large. And that there may be an effort to make this a little bit more of a compromise than just asking for something. It appears to be why I'm asking for twelve feet, I'm asking for the moon, of course. So, you know, but the, we're not able to provide.
I understand.
Go all the way.
And let me, let me, let me put that in more legalese for the record.
Thank you.
Ultimately, it is the burden of the applicant to demonstrate entitlement to the variance by meeting all the various criteria. One of the criteria is that the request is the minimum necessary to provide, allow for reasonable use of the property. It's your burden to present that evidence to us. We have a statement from the the owner saying twelve feet is the minimum. And he's explained why he believes twelve feet is the minimum. But of course, his statement is somewhat self-serving. So if you can bring in some sort of independent opinion as to what the minimum size of this, and we prefer to call it a therapy pool, and that would be helpful in the correspondence you get from it, from both the medical provider and the third party, so that this can be considered as a therapy pool as opposed to a recreational swimming pool.
For what it's worth, the.
Can't do it.
I was just going to say the minimum depth for a therapy pool definition.
Well, that, but that's, that's, okay, we're, that, you can go ahead and say that, okay.
There's a minimum, a therapy pool is defined between three and a half and four foot eleven.
And what's what's the source of that?
That is the, what is the name? The Therapy Pool Depth Aquatic Therapy Rehab Institute.
Okay, so that's provided for informational purposes, but should not be the basis of any decision that you make.
Understood.
And it's provided for guidance to the applicant.
Is that, you're talking about depth?
Yeah, that was the depth.
Okay.
Three and a half to four foot eleven.
We're not dealing, we're really not as concerned about the depth as we are about the width of the pool, yes.
My concern, my concern is, no, my concern is, and one that you might wish to consider, is that, you know, to distinguish this from a recreational pool. Otherwise, you know, people are going to be coming in and asking for standard sized lap pools because they're more marketable on resale than a therapy pool, which might be less marketable.
Okay, but just for clarification and putting it on the record, one of the criteria, as you just explained, is that this is the minimum modification necessary to make this this pool happen. So that has to be identified. And you have to be able to prove that burden before we can approve it. That's one of the eight criteria we must say yes to. Otherwise, we can, we can absolutely deny this request. So it'll be up to the applicant to go and get a doctor's opinion that states all the things that have already been stated. But but, you know, we're focusing on the depth of the pool a little bit more than I think we need to be. The length of the pool is not the issue. You've already got your seventy five feet of length according to the diagram, correct? The site plan? So the real issue is the width of the pool from the house to the to the seawall. That that's the area we're really concerned with. And you've got to be able to prove that the minimum modification is to have a twelve foot wide pool. And if you can't prove that, then we have the right to deny it. That's the bottom line. Okay, so you've got to get a doctor's letter that says what it has to say.
Okay.
Are you willing to do that? Do we need to vote on a continuance?
Yes, and it needs to be continued to date certain.
I like, I'm going to say one thing first. Just from the standpoint of math, him being six foot, six foot six and his fin being two foot six, that's nine feet. And I think that a one and a half foot in front and back is a reasonable, I think that we all would think that that would be what the minimal would be. I just want to state that before we say the continuance.
But he's not swimming the width of the pool, he's swimming the length of the pool.
Right, but he has to turn around. He has to turn around.
Okay, you can do a flip turn, you can do all kinds of turns.
No, he can't, he's, he's in therapy. This is, this is the point. This is therapy, this is for his medical purposes, it's not a regular pool.
Typically, somebody stops and puts their hand up on the on the side of the pool and turns around. They don't do a spin around, so anyway.
This is for his therapy, not for our.
And I think, I think the doctor's report will help explain that for us. I think that's a good point.
We need this as as opposed to being an opinion, we need a documentation.
We need, we need the document.
How much time do you think you'll need to get the information and get back to us?
How much time we need to go to an American doctor?